Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth.
Here.
Mayor Dale.
Here. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Mr. Holbrook, was there any action taken in closed session?
Mr. Dell, I have no action to report.
Okay. Any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Oh, adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. See, public appearances, matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand. Acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name or the address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. As requested, longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Anybody like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to C2, matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand, acknowledged by the mayor, and at that time, state your name and address for the record. Again, the mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. Seeing none to speak, go ahead. We're going to move to consent agenda. All items appearing on consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council by one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at the time and determined by the mayor.
Second.
Kavanaugh, motion and second, please vote. Okay.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we're moving on to action items, discussion, action. E1, discussion, the local agency special tax and bond accountability.
I believe our administrative services director, Ms. Gutierrez, is on our virtual. No, Dennis, do you want to take the item?
Um, Mayor and council, this item is, represents the filing of various reports that are required by law to be done in connection with our community facilities district. They're known commonly as Bratton, Mayfield, Monterey Park, Savannah Ranch, Springfield, and Victoria. I think in the documents referred to as Victoria Ranch. Each of those reports outlines in general terms the amount of the special tax that has been collected and where that money has gone. Of the, of those six CFDs, you'll, if you, when you look at the reports, five of those reports would just, would indicate that we're, they're operating in the black. One, Mayfield, is not. And the, so in that circumstance, with respect to Mayfield, the amount of special tax that we're collecting does not cover the debt service for the bonds that were issued way back when. The city has been making up that difference just because our, our credit rating would be impacted in a negative way if the bonds were to go into default. And so, all of them are operating in the black with respect to, except for Mayfield. As Mayfield is now developing, the, the, the amount of the deficit is going down each year. And I'm given to understand that at some point, it will be right side up, in which case, at that point, the city will then be able to, would be in a position to reimburse what it has been making up in terms of the debt service on those CFDs. So the action for you tonight is, is to accept the, the six reports. You'll see these reports on an annual basis. The law requires that we do these reports annually. And, and our consultant, Scott Cobble prepares, or his office prepares these reports. So we would just ask that you, that there is a motion to accept the reports.
I'll retain that one. Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
On to E2, discussion on Zen City Community Engagement Software.
Mayor and council, I'm going to take you back for a minute to our last strategic planning session. And one of the directives that you all provided staff was to enhance our community engagement, improve transparency and communication with our residents. Since then, we've taken various steps to implement changes, such as revamping our budget, increasing technology here in council chambers, establish our mobile application and, and going through our, our new website. Furthermore, we are looking to collaborate with Zen City, which is a public engagement software that allows cities to plan, prioritize projects, and understanding the concerns of our residents. We are proposing to utilize American Rescue Plan monies for the full term of three-year contract. As you know, one of the primary focuses of ARPA was to enhance the ability to distribute public information, engage with communities, and, and recover some of those responses and, and engage communities' concerns. With us today, you do have the representative from Zen City, which is Jonathan. He's joined us via Zoom. So I'm going to turn this over to him and let him talk specifically how Imperial and Zen City can work together to make these enhancements.
Hi, thank you all, Alexis. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jonathan from Zen City. It's very nice to meet you today. Firstly, happy new year. And secondly, of course, thank you for allowing me to present today at City Council. It might be easy if I, I'll try to share my screen, or if not, I'm not too sure. Alexis, are you controlling the screen for them?
I am. So as, as you ask, I will be able to advance the slides. Okay, so. Okay. And we've banned the individual of. It's a, it's an open, this is part of having an open link for Zoom. Okay. So Jonathan, I think, I think we're good now? If we, we'll resume that.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Alexis again. So, just a little bit about Zen City before I go too far. First, we are a technology vendor. We are company exclusive. So we only work with cities, counties, and state agencies. And our primary mission is to better connect city leadership to the majority residents of your community. So obviously, the voice of the sewers don't often reach the household. We don't often know who the mayor, council members, or Alexis or city manager are to give live feedback to our calls to help you understand the needs and preferences and priorities of your remaining nineteen thousand nine hundred residents and not just the same five or ten that we might always be hearing from. So that's essentially what our primary missions. Today, we work with over two hundred and fifty odd local governments across the US, within the state of California. We work with approximately about forty-five communities, mostly cities and a handful of counties as well. Feel free to skip a slide or two. Alexis. Yeah, this is just a classic quote from a CIO that we work with in the city of Corinham. And just to give you a bit of context, you know, they, they just some of the oftentimes names that we've worked with across the board. We work with cities as large as San Diego or Los Angeles. But, but Bratton is working with smaller, three-dimensionsed communities, ten, fifteen thousand residents, twenty thousand residents. And of course, depending on the size of the community, we do focus on different things, with the rest of downtown redevelopment projects, renovations of parks, or things that I've come to learn over the last few months, staying with the great team at Imperial. Things in relation to tourism, potential funding measures that are coming through, and helping you guys understand how residents feel about certain issues and certain projects that was coming up. And also, at the same time, other issues that aren't necessarily always made brought to our attention. So a combination of everything like that. So feel free to, six slide. So, these four pillars really identify what our main goals are. So on top of our mission of helping you to acquire majority residents, we're also here to help you understand where our residents are getting their feedback from on city-related matters, where misinformation might be lying as well. So when we do need to educate the public, when we do need to push out messaging, we know which channels, which pages, which platforms are going to be playing for us if we do decide to engage. And of course, my favorite one is why we use, is also to engage more members. So we, we do a lot of reporting at Zen City. We summarize a lot of things that's going on, whether there's to residents, the data, and the state running analysis of what's going on within your city. Or in surveys as well, and something that we can present in casting, in casting items such as this. So all four pillars are certainly part of what we do. Next slide, please, Alexis. So you might be wondering, okay, Jonathan, that's a well, good. How do we achieve all this? So what Zen City does is, whereas Alexis mentioned it, we're a public interaction platform. We connect to everything that is publicly available within your community. And this is a combination of sources of the city owns today, whether that's your own social media channel, the, the city's Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, whether it's your chatbots, your websites, or town hall meeting minutes, one-on-one systems if you have. But more importantly, we engage and we connect to all things that are publicly available that aren't necessarily owned by the city, but are about the city in relation to. So it's message boards, Facebook news articles, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn. And we combine everything into one organic dashboard. And we break it down, topic by topic, department by department. So you can clearly see, click a button, what are some of those major issues that our residents care about? And more importantly, what the resident sentiment is towards those particular topics. So not just what residents are talking about, what they want to say to the city do, but how they feel about how their motion connected to these issues. Our final is to do a lot of in-store reporting, usually titled conversations, just like this. So Alexis, the city manager, to kind of share information with you. So you can say, hey, we've got this program coming up. This is how our residents actually feel. This is a good summation of what's going on within the community. And next slide, please. Wonderful. So, not too sure if you guys can see the, actually, I'm going to. But you guys can see the slides. So every single topic, every single department, I have a sort of summation of the unique attributes in this community, anything from COVID-19 to downtown redevelopment projects, to transportation-related matters, to tourism, to taxes, to anything like that. And just to share, something that I will stress, just see it in the left-hand side as well. We connect and we translate from multiple languages as well. So understanding that, you know, Imperial has a very diverse community, a nice balance of primary English language spoken at home, and also Spanish spoken at home. So we're actually able to translate to multiple languages to help you understand what different pockets the community, what different community groups feel about certain issues as well. Next slide, please. Well, and it's something about city management. Also, I'm from Australia, so please feel free to ask questions. How have I seen what's happened so far? What makes it so rural, rural, Francis? So if there are any questions on, please feel free to ask. One of the beauties of Zen City is that beyond just the standard departments that make up City Hall, public health, safety, transportation, we allow cities to customize and create their own projects, their own topics that they're personally responsible for and they're personally interested in. So this could be very favorable about issues, whether it be about COVID-19 discourse, or as we get closer towards summer, wildfire response efforts, helping you identify where our residents are getting their information from, tax judges discourse as well, city events that are coming up. Of course, we could have just had a lot of, um, lovely fun events following Thanksgiving, Christmas, but also Halloween and July 4th. To, um, type of issues, whether it be about public works, infrastructure as well. So we cover a wide spectrum of issues and programs that take place in the city in any given time. And the rest of that is just we are local government exclusive. The way that we partner with the city is that the city of Imperial would work with just me with the whole data. And the city of Zen City and the city's success manager, who oversees a lot of California issues as well, can also hear our best practices, what we're seeing in similar, similar city sizes who are undertaking similar projects at any given time. Next slide, please. How I was? So, one of the best things that we do here at Zen City is periodically, we ran it out on a spot, of course, we can always do it more, is we look to provide a snapshot report of what is going on, a specific matter that you wish to focus on. Now, I understand tourism and in relation to hotels is, is obviously, you know, something that's coming out, playing out and coming up in the, in the matters. So we help understand issues in relation to that. And then why our residents feel about city tax judges or state tax judges that might be going on. Some, and not Alexis mentioned, but this is a pigeon for something that could be utilized as part of our funding as well. Might, you know, we also do hotel, that's quite frequently for cities. It's helping cities understand what programs residents want to see as part of their afterfunding session. So of course, you're probably receiving two tranches of X million dollars, I'm not too sure. And there might be certain programs along the way, maybe that, well, we'd like to understand which programs residents actually want to see prioritized and why so as well, so we can do a lot of reporting on this as well. We probably don't need to go through a visible example, but there are probably two or three different slides, you know, in, in, talk about these different matters. So maybe skip ahead, maybe one or two slides, Alexis, possible. So this is another downtown redevelopment projects. This is another classic example where a lot of cities, particularly of your size, recently, across Arizona, Texas, and California, recently have proposed the idea of introducing a store or a utility fee. I'm not too sure if this is even relevant for Imperial, but we're actually hoping to understand what residents' primary concerns are in relation to introducing something like this. Whether the city, city better communicate this moving forward. But also, not just about resident feedback in relation to this. But what's the origin of that feedback? Is it just residents against something? Or is it actually more of that transparency-related concern? It's helping understand the concern, the real challenge of resident feedback, and present that to you guys accordingly to city manager, to Alexis, to council as well, or for action, if that makes sense. The final slide I'd like to share is the, the one on the next slide. And this is just to show a classic example of us. This is a community that we work with in Texas. We helped understand in real time, residents, specifically the Latinx community, the Spanish-speaking community, their primary concerns, their primary challenges. Going back to work in the midst of the second wave of COVID. This is just one of my favorite examples because this city that we've worked with, they were pushing out a lot of messaging around and out, going back to work, access to testing, et cetera, et cetera. Has something great response for it, including residents. They were finding that they weren't actually engaging this Spanish-speaking community. And what is it Zen City was able to do? We're able to tap into or connect to all those publicly available Spanish-speaking channels on Facebook, on Instagram, on Twitter, on local news. And we're able to identify for city leadership, specifically with the Spanish-speaking community, that access to testing wasn't actually the primary motivation for going back to work. That the Spanish-speaking residents should rather consider about economic vulnerability and exposure to the virus itself, which ironically is coming back around. I continue to imagine relations on the ground right now, it seems, similar communication challenges for cities. And so being able to communicate this with the cities, your Spanish-speaking residents, seeing one alone a little bit more of the city, what we were going to do about access to, uh, exposure to the virus itself. Unless the city was able to do this here in Texas, they were actually able to have a much stronger engagement with their Spanish-speaking population and the economic concerns of moving back to work. I mean, the diet preference, if you want to learn a bit more, but, um, this is just something to share. Something that we did for a lot of different communities in Texas. One more thing I'd like to show as part of the face presentation is we do do a lot of polling and survey work for communities as well. So they're probably, that might be from time to time, an issue that Alexis or the city manager or the mayor says, look, we'd love to understand resident feedback on this particular matter. Residents might not necessarily be talking about it just yet. So what we can do is we can do a quick poll or a quick survey on a specific matter. And the way I see this, and the way that communities actually love to leverage this, it's like throwing a pond, a pebble into a pond and watching it affect. And we want residents to talk about the chi for matter, but they're not talking about it just yet. Let's put a poll out there, let's put a survey out there, let's start the conversation and then see the flow on effects on top of that. So that's the beauty of Zen City is we do a lot of organic feedback and also we like to start the conversation on certain topics as well. Look, I'm on my own entity, I've been here for a long time, so I'm always happy to keep having a chat, keep having a conversation about it, but I can't see your faces, but I'd love to break here for questions.
Oh, I, I did notice that you can pull this out for, um, let's say, utility bills and different stuff like that. Would this be a 218 compliant or is it 218?
So it wouldn't be that for, as far as following that, if we were to go over an increase in, say, our utility fees. We still have to follow that Prop 218 process. This can be a component of that, but it's more of the engagement and outreach to gain the pulse of that before we were to undergo an actual process of increasing any utility fees. Where something like this can be helpful is, you know, we've, we've talked about a transient occupancy tax increase measure and to gauge how the resident population would feel about such an increase and, and to just gather that information, how would it be received? Different amendments to ordinances or certain concerns of the council, we would be able to engage the feedback. What we encounter currently, and I, I think the abbreviation was used, we call it STP, it's same ten people, where we, we frequently get the same feedback from the same individuals, which is great, and we want to encourage that participation. But there's so many platforms that are being used for engagement. For example, I think, you know, as, as much as we want to confer with our residents and, and encourage the neighborhood watch groups, we see there certain crime or activity in the area, you know, being reported there on social media. Same thing, there's groups, private groups on the Ring security platform or the Nextdoor application, things of that where, where we don't have direct access, if you will, as a, as an entity, and being able to gather the information and also disseminate the information. As Jonathan discussed, the, the poll and throwing that pebble out there of, okay, if we were to do this, how is the community going to receive it? The other side of that is there's conversations that are happening of concerns that we may not know. For example, sidewalks and streets, or maybe there's streetlight repairs or things of that that are being talked about on those platforms that you don't know, maybe it's council unless someone's picking up the phone or coming here. We're able to engage with that and we're able to then provide you a detailed analysis of what it is and, and the pulse of what that concern is. So then, when it comes time to budget and we're looking at capital improvements and things like that, you can say, this is a priority for this area. This is what our CFD fund should be used on in this park because that's an issue. Things, things like that, we're able to have a data-driven governance and make those decisions based off of what the residents are wanting and, and looking for.
Thank you. Next question is, Jonathan, I did notice on one of your slides it says that, um, people can create their own dialogue, bring in their own stuff. Would that be something that we can, that we would have access to regulate what's being put on there? Per se, that our site doesn't get hijacked? And, you know, people just start slandering or, or just going off on different things that, because like, right now on social media, we have to put up those, those, uh, those notices that if you do A, B, C, and D, you will be removed and stuff like that, that we don't come back and get, you know, violations for that. Is that something that would be able to be controlled? And if so, would that violate any rules or regulations?
An, an excellent question, Councilman. So thank you for answering. This would be a city-based, a city leadership-based dashboard. So if only Alexis, the city manager, elected officials, or whoever you guys wish to grant access, we'd have access to those dashboards. So when we talk about creating projects, it would be you guys creating those projects or your leadership team, you, if that makes sense. On top of that, you guys are personally part, so not residents themselves, if I can clarify.
So essentially, if I can kind of put a, a visual element to it, and is, Zen City has an algorithm that gets deployed to the various sites. Using keywords and data, they are able to collect what the conversations already are with allowing for still the obvious ambiguity or autonomy of those persons saying it. But we're able to pinpoint, you know, say, there's a conversation on a Nextdoor application within one of our subdivisions because there's a street or a park or a safety concern. Maybe it's any of those items. And we don't, you know, we're gathering, okay, this is a concern of the area without having to be directly on that platform reading it itself. And so it's, it's a one-way where we're receiving all the information and communication. It's not us, and then we're able to take. It's not us, and then we're able to take that and then form, maybe it's communication campaigns. Maybe it's, you know, it's, there's a need for the process of graffiti abatement or things of that. Or, you know, there's a, a blind spot that we need to consider a traffic control measure in a certain area. We're able to just pull the information, present it to you so you can make the decisions and policies moving forward to address them.
I'll answer a question.
I have a, um, question. I think you may have just touched on it, but, um. Is it only going to be controlled by one person? Like, would you be the person who navigates it? Or if we had particular projects that we were working on, could we create, uh, like, could we follow certain threads or certain? How often would we?
So our, oh, go ahead, Jonathan.
Sure. So typically for a city of your size, we grant around ten, uh, leadership users. So I guess there's probably about ten. So this is a, if we're starting point, possibly we need to have one, two, or three as well. But yeah, and so. That answers the first question. So of course, Councilmembers are able to create the right projects to talk about. Always that you're.
And what we would be doing is, uh, each, uh, council meeting, you receive a manager's memo. We would provide the detailed analytics report in each of those memos. So you couldn't, you could see what's being talked about. Um, and then you would provide directions to staff if there's very certain initiatives that you as an individual or as a council whole would like to engage in, and find more about. Do a pulse check, things of that nature. Um, we, we would be providing that to you and then we can also look at providing the access. So you can see in real time what's being gathered, but you will be receiving those reports bi weekly, should you decide to proceed with this contract.
I've already thought of like three projects that I want to use it for. I'm, I'm, I'm very excited at the prospect.
Only get one.
No, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll add twenty more then.
I, 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 um, I know I've probably mentioned it a couple of times, but I would love to emphasize that like we are local government exclusive. So, uh, the team that you'd be working with, I mean, works with local government and we work with cities and towns and boroughs and things like that. So, um, every city's obviously got its own unique story and unique challenges. But like, it's part of the partnership. We also share best practices that we're seeing in similar sized communities or communities going through similar challenges. So you guys don't have to reinvent the wheel if, uh, we've seen something similar previously.
I think this is really cool. I would like how it's like another set of eyes and ears for us. And we don't really have to like look at all the social medias, you know, and everything. Cause I know that's what we kind of do amongst councils, you know?
Just to add to that, Katie, I mean, there's so many different, uh, different aspects or facets of social media. Like you said, the Nextdoor app or Facebook or Instagram, and we don't always find those posts. So having them generated in one place, I think would be very beneficial, especially in a time when people are hesitant to come to meetings. And they just waste their opinions via social media. So I think it would be extraordinarily beneficial.
Just a action item or discussion. I noticed that it says approval, so I was just curious on that.
It, it is an action item. If you wish to proceed, we are proposing since ARPA is one time monies to do the full term of the contract. Uh, it allows two things, obviously, um, for us to get a little bit of time. So we can figure out general budget wise, how we can continue the service moving forward after the three year term. The total amount is, uh, forty five thousand, um, for, for all three years, yes.
So, uh, it sounds like we have some people that really like this. I see Corinne's ready to jump on board. So are you going to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion as second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you very much, Senator. I'll say that.
Okay, uh, let's move on to E three, discussion, action, rural city council committee appointments.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, members of the council, uh, as we went through our reorganization during our last meeting. Um, before you, you do have your committee appointments. Um, some are for city appointments that will take place on current committees that we have. Um, others are for regional committees. Um, some require two primaries, one alternate. Um, in addition to that, um, um, it was an oversight on the reorganization. We did not appoint a chair and vice chair of the successor agency. So you see that action as well. Um, so that is before you to, to also consider. Um, as we go through these appointments, um, what I will ask is I will read that committee. And then we will go through and make those appointments and we can take that in one action after the list is full, just to make that a little bit more efficient. So your first would be the personnel committee. If there's any questions, that is two primaries and one alternate.
Did you say there is or isn't someone on this already?
There, there are, um, appointees on this there. We do have two primaries, which are, um, currently, um. Let me see here, I believe it is council member Amporano and Mayor Dale. Uh, we would also be needing an, an alternate. So if we would like to re-up those appointments, we can. But I do need one more as an alternate in the event there is a conflict or one of you would not be able to fulfill in that capacity of personnel. Next would be the ad hoc committee. And I can go into detail with each of these, um, currently. The ad hoc committee is traditionally, it is a, a less than a quorum, which is two members of the city council. Traditionally consists of the mayor and mayor pro tem. Um, but again, we are asking for two primaries and one alternate. Uh, currently this was, uh, Eugenio and Dale. Um, so we would be looking to, to change that, um, but also again, have an alternate in the event we need it.
No one else wants to do it, I'll be.
Just to, just to clarify, I do have, uh, Mayor Dale, Mayor Pro Tem, Burnworth and, uh, council member Eugenio. Okay, um, next we do have our, uh.
That'll be the primary on this one.
This is only one primary and one alternate?
I'm just kidding.
Recognizing this was established, um, we are just adding this to the calendar, uh, friends of Imperial Parks. Uh, we do ask, this is in, um, a liaison position, it's a non-voting position. We do have one primary and one alternate currently, uh, council member Eugenio is the primary.
I think you should be the alternate.
You want me to be the alternate? Okay, I'll be the alternate.
Next, we do have the, uh, Imperial Arts District Advisory Council. We did establish this, uh, we do have a few initiatives, uh, coming up this year as well as some applications for grants. We do require one primary and one alternate. Um, currently it is, uh, Mayor Dale and council member Eugenio. So next I will move on to the airport advisory committee. Um, again, one primary, one alternate. Uh, currently appointed is council member Dale. We do not have an alternate or Mayor Dale. We do not have an alternate. The next is the airport land use. Currently, the primary designee is, uh, the planning commission. That is because the airport land use commission does meet on the third Wednesdays, which conflicts with council meetings. Um, he has expressed he would continue to be that appointee. Um, you can also appoint an alternate. Um, if you do have an alternate, uh, and it cannot be an elected or another member of the planning commission. You can appoint a member of management staff if needed. It's the third one.
Yeah, management wouldn't be able to do it either.
Of a planning commission or we can continue to search, there's a.
We'll, we'll continue to search.
Okay. Next is the sentinel advisory committee. Um, this is meeting on an as needed basis, uh, for our partnership with the, um, prisons within our community. Current appointments are primary, Amporano and alternate is Captain Sheffield. Or I apologize, uh, council member Tucker and Captain Sheffield.
Yeah. Now it worked out just fine for me.
Okay.
Take a captain one every time.
Uh, Imperial Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce.
I'd like to be on that one.
Need one alternate as well.
An alternate.
Uh, California Joint Powers Authority. Currently that is council member Eugenio and myself as an alternate. Last but not least, Imperial County Transportation Commission. Being that council member Amporano is the chairperson. Um, is there an alternate? Yes, Tucker is the, the current. You want to keep that? Okay. That does, uh, complete the entire list. For committee appointments for calendar year twenty twenty two. I will need a, a motion to adopt that list.
Make the motion.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero. Um, I will also need a motion for the selection of the chairman to the successor agency. And just to reflect, that is to nominate, um, Mayor Dale to sit as chairman, correct? Motion carries five zero. Our next, um, selection of vice chairman to the successor agency. And that is to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Burnworth to that seat.
I'll second that. Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
On to. E four, discussion, action on resolution opposing federal, state and local mandates related to COVID nineteen.
Uh, good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, at the direction of Mayor Dale, staff has put together the resolution before you opposing federal, state and local mandates. Related to COVID nineteen and supporting an individual's choice to make healthcare decisions for themselves and their families. We find that the confusion resulting from the ever changing rules and regulations, inconsistent guidelines between varying, varying jurisdictions. Relating to masks, vaccines, quarantines, et cetera, uh, has made the mandates unenforceable and further infringes on a citizen's independence. At the request of the mayor, I will read the resolution in full into the record. Resolution number twenty twenty two dash zero one. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Imperial opposing federal, state and local mandates and in favor of individual choice. Whereas the city council for the city of Imperial firmly supports the rule of law and aspects and respects the authority. Of federal, state and local authorities to address matters of public health. Whereas the city council nevertheless believes that federal, state and local mandates in response to COVID nineteen pandemic. Including mandating the use of masks, vaccines and quarantines has been inconsistent and has caused confusion for its citizens. And intrudes on its citizens' personal autonomy. Whereas the city council notes that the exceptions contained in the various mandates and guidance documents issued by federal, state and local governments. Make it nearly impossible to determine whether a citizen is in compliance with the array of mandates. Without intruding upon the citizen's private, personal information. Whereas the city council believes that criminalizing the behavior of its citizens. In the limited circumstances found in the city is counterproductive and serves only to alienate the very population the city is sworn to protect and serve. Whereas the city council has faith in its citizens and their ability to make appropriate healthcare decisions. In consultation with their chosen medical providers for themselves, their families and our community. And whereas an example of the confusing and conflicting mandates issued by federal, state and local governments. Is the current masking mandates. The Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention issued guidance that does not include a universal mask mandate. And provides recommendation and exemptions based on people's individual circumstances. The state of California Department of Public Health has issued a universal mandate requiring masking indoors statewide. From December fifteenth through January fifteenth, twenty twenty two. However, there are numerous exemptions to the California Department of Public Health mandate. Including an unwritten exemption applicable to certain counties with existing mask mandates. Further, on August seventeenth, twenty twenty one, the county of Imperial issued a mandatory mask mandate. Requiring all residents and visitors to wear masks, wear a mask in indoor settings. On October twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. The county of Imperial amended this mandate to only require unvaccinated residents and visitors of the county to wear a mask. In indoor public settings and businesses. On December fifteenth, twenty twenty one, the county of Imperial amended the mandate for the third time in four months. To again require all residents and visitors to wear a mask in indoor settings. This third amendment was made despite the county of Imperial having an existing mask mandate in place. And apparently qualifying for an exemption to the CDPH, California Department of Public Health mandate. For similar reasons as other counties with similar circumstances. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. The above referenced recitals are true and correct and incorporated herein. The city council finds that the confusion resulting from the ever changing rules, inconsistent requirements and inconsistent implementation of federal, state and local mandates. In response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, including mandating the use of masks, vaccines and quarantines. Has made these mandates unworkable and unenforceable and urges its citizens to continue to make appropriate healthcare decisions. In consultation with their chosen medical providers for themselves, their families and our community. The city council believes that its limited resources should be directed to educating and informing its citizens to act in accordance. With the guidance and best practices and medical advice received in consultation with their chosen medical providers. The city council finds that all of its citizens, as well as those who work and recreate in the city. Should be left to determine for themselves, based upon their individual circumstances and own medical history. Whether to wear a mask or receive a vaccine and should not have those decisions decided for them by a one size fits all. Federal, state and local government mandate. The city council expresses its dissatisfaction with current federal, state and local mandates. To the extent such mandates intrude upon its citizens' ability to make their own informed choices regarding their lives and their bodies. The city council directs the city manager to send a copy of this resolution to the governor of the state of California. The state public health officer, the department of the state. Department of Public Health, the county executive officer for the county of Imperial and the Imperial County Local Health Officer.
Thank you. Um, yes.
Needs a date. I understand.
We would extend the January fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty two.
Sixth line.
To February fifteenth, twenty twenty two.
Yeah, it, it's my understanding that since the time of posting that mandate has been extended until February fifteenth.
Yes.
Is there anybody that would like discuss, discussion on this or do you have any comments?
Well, as you ask, I think, uh, my applause is good. Because I, I agree that people should be able to make their own choice and not be, um, told what to do. Um, people are adults, people have their own life. I don't tell them what car to buy. I don't tell them where to live. I don't tell them what to do, where to work. What to eat or anything else, but yet. what to eat or anything else, but it seems like the government is telling us what we can and can't do. I think this is another way to express that we are trying to look out for our community. We are trying to look out for our businesses. We are trying to look out for our city and give them their own choice. So I will support this a hundred percent. I second that since.
You know, this is one that I've always like went back and forth on personally. I'm a scientist on my day job and so, you know, nothing like COVID to ruin the credibility of all scientists. I promise there are some honest ones out there. But yeah, I don't, I think it's been confusing. I don't like that certain cities and counties are exempt while ours aren't. I think the rules should be everybody and I think that we should have the right to choose. You know, I really don't want to make our staff get vaccinated if they fully believe that they don't want to. Same with our kids having to get vaccinated. I think that's a parent's choice as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You know, so I think I think this whole thing has gotten so political and so far out of hand that I don't even think any of us really even know what to do anymore. So I support this resolution.
Correct.
I don't want to underestimate the power of COVID because so many of us have lost people because of it. You know, there are very real medical concerns, but I also agree that we should be able to make our own decisions and in the context of San Francisco, we have the same the same vaccination rate. So if there are exemptions that will be made, then we should be included in those exemptions. And just thank you for taking the stand you believe in and I agree with you.
I think the biggest thing for me is I I feel like in the last four months, which by the way, when the governor set this last mandate, I told everybody the day he did it that they'll extend it. This will not stop. And my prediction was correct. And I I just I'm appalled at what is going on with our children in school and what they're having to deal with. We are ruining a generation. And it's sad. It's disgusting. Besides that, I have people coming to me that are genuinely concerned that they do not want to take the vaccination. And we're making this decision for the benefit and welfare of our employees. We love each and every one of them. They have gone through much dialogue. They've talked to one another. We feel comfortable with this. The other part of this is too, and I, and this is I'm vaccinated. I'm vaccinated. I did it partly for myself, but mostly for my wife because she had to have the vaccination. And for each and every person out there that had to be forced to take a vaccination to get a paycheck is disgusting. And it angers me because I look at other states that did not comply with the rest of the of the union and done very well. And this makes no sense. But what deeply concerns me is the people that were unvaccinated that have been shunned and been pushed aside. And to have a leader of our country say that they are the pandemic of the unvaccinated is disgusting. And this is the reason why I push so hard for this and I am very thankful for this council and the staff. I think everybody has a personal choice of what they want to do. If they want to wear a mask, be vaccinated, take precautions, that's their individual right. That's also the same for the unvaccinated. And so with this, I'm I'm very pleased and thankful. So I have a motion and a second. Can we please vote?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to E five, discussion action Sun Runners Car Club Annual Carney Sada Run.
Sir Mayor, members of the council, the Sun Runners Car Club has submitted a special event application to host its annual Carney Sada Run Car Show at Eager Park on Saturday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The event is scheduled to take place from ten AM until three PM with setup starting at six AM and cleanup to be completed by five PM. The car club has hosted its annual car show at Eager Park since two thousand thirteen. It is requested to close the four street, four street intersections at Eager Park, which includes West Ninth, West Tenth, G, and H Streets. The requested closure time for the streets along the perimeter of Eager Park is six AM until four PM. City of Imperial will provide barricades and staff to conduct street closures. City will track costs and Sun Runners Car Club has agreed to pay for the costs associated for the street closure. Sun Runners Car Club has provided an emergency operational plan for the event and certificate of insurance, naming the City of Imperial as additionally insured. The application has been reviewed by and approved by the Special Events Committee. It is the department's recommendation to approve Sun Runners Car Club to host its annual Carney Sada Carney Sada Run Car Show at Eager Park on Saturday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-two from ten AM until three PM and authorize the partial street closures at the intersections of G Street and Tenth Street, H Street, H Street and Tenth Street, G Street and Ninth Street and H Street and Seventh, Ninth Street. I apologize.
Fish, red fish, green fish?
I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Streets.
This is a good event. I don't know if you've ever had it, anybody ever had a chance to go to it? If you've never gone, please make time, try to go to this. Several years ago, I had Cub Scouts participate with them and, you know, just watching the adults interact with younger kids and cars. I think that's the that's the, how do you say that? The common.
Camaraderie.
Yeah, for all these kids, for everybody. So I'd make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Before we vote, I really encourage everybody to come out because you really don't realize it, but when you really look at it, you have several hundred thousand dollars worth of cars, maybe even closer to millions. So it's, it's really cool to come out and see what guys do and and especially some young people, get them out there. Maybe they'll bring their tuner cars. I mean, that's a big thing and hey, I'm an old sun runner. I'd say bring them out. So anyway, please.
We make a stipulation that we get to drive one.
You know what? I bet, I bet we can work that out.
Or at least be driven.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay.
Thank you. There, yes, there's a second.
Okay, yeah, I need an authorization.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Yeah, we can't forget insurance. Come on.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. E six, discussion action on spillment services.
Sir Mayor, council members, before you is the annual renewal of the spillment system. Does the record management system that used by the police department. This might be the last year. We are moving to another system through the county as well, Pro Phoenix. I will suffer any question that you may have.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, move on to E seven, discussion action water treatment pan plant, water treatment plant booster pump rebuilds. Time for more water, Jackie.
How about there? Mr. Mayor and council, this is the second half of a project that we started the last fiscal year. You have a total of four motors and pumps at the water plant that are the high service pumps that push water to the town. We rebuilt two in the last year budget. We're going to do the next two in this year's budget. It's expected not to exceed forty thousand dollars based on the last two years' cost, but we don't know the exact cost until they tear that electric motor apart and tell us what all it needs.
This is for two pumps, right, Jackie?
It's for the the two that weren't done last year.
Some of them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we're moving on to E eight, VFD troubleshooting and replacement.
Or tests. Oh, we just. Once we get up, we will come. And the expected cost in this is.
It'll get us ready before summer, right? And will we have any backups?
Well, the two that are.
The two that are there.
About quit.
Okay. Great.
So, so is that thirty-eight or thirty-two? Oh, thirty-eight, okay.
Thirty-two is the of the final. Actually got the final quote from them. They told us being Tess Electric and Alan Bradley to expect a ten percent increase in product cost and the product cost is more than ten percent.
Oh, I would be willing to bet. Everything I'm dealing with right now is through the roof, so.
Hey, I tried to buy one bolt for a Dodge Tilt.
So were we approving thirty-nine thousand?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty, uh, thirty-eight thousand, eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. I don't see.
I see a thirty-nine.
I don't have a thirty-nine.
I said fiscal impact thirty-nine, five seventy-two, forty.
Thirty-nine thousand.
And then I see another one for thirty-two, nine seventy-seven.
That's the one I saw, but that's, I totally understand though, Jackie, I do.
It's, it's one of so fast, we can't.
You can't, yeah.
The amount by the time the agenda was posted was the thirty-two thousand, but the amended amount of the the thirty-nine is is the correct for your action.
Yeah.
Can we just do forty, just not to exceed, just in case?
It probably would be wise.
I would, I would make the motion to amend this to forty thousand, not to exceed, just in case something happens.
Okay, a motion and a second. Please vote.
Sorry to make it difficult, Jackie, but better to be safe than sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
The only reason why I brought up the thirty-two and you said thirty-eight, I kind of figured we've already had a bump because I've had some stuff go up monthly, sometimes weekly, so.
That was in.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, no, I don't, that doesn't surprise me.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, move on to E nine, discussion action, bid number twenty twenty-one dash eleven Airport Loop Waterline Improvement Project.
One of the projects that we have to do with bond money from our side of the system. High Ranch area. This is a water line that will go around the end of the airport and the right away for the IID for the ditch there will be on that dirt road. It'll extend, it'll come out by the basketball court there at Sky Ranch and it'll tie up just basically through the retention basin in what is Monterey Park, back into a city street there and it'll loop those two areas. We received a total of nine bids for the project. The two lower bids did come in very close to the engineer's estimate with the lowest bid coming in from SRK Engineering. It is five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. And we do have a report from Webb. They did the background checks. They did the check on the contractors, license, the insurance, and a recommendation from Webb to move forward with that firm.
Good.
So moved.
I'll second that, but Jackie, do we have a timeframe?
Um.
Start and completion.
Open a hundred and twenty days.
From start date.
Or anything, what the the biggest unknown is ground. But we're going to hit it. Volume of groundwater.
Have it at the park. I guarantee you we have.
Well, we know we're going to hit it. We know Lyons has given us the hydrology study. We know we're going to hit it at nine feet. We just don't know the volume.
Correct.
So how long it takes to pump it, how long, de-watering was in the bid. It was a separate line item. So we did make sure that the contractors were aware that they will have to de-water. We just don't know how long that that part of the project's going to take and we had made mention to all bidders that if it took longer in de-watering than they anticipated that there would not be liquidated damages, they'd be allowed to proceed. That's something we, till nature lets us go.
Second that motion.
A motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, E ten, discussion action, water treatment plant notice of completion.
That's too far. File the notice of completion on the wastewater treatment plant. This is the MBR plant that we built. We've seen, been to the grand opening. Just to give you a little bit of where that project was and what it took. That project, the bid came in at twenty million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. There was a five percent contingency on it, so a total budget was twenty-one million, two hundred and eighty-nine. Project. I've changed your.
Second.
I have a motion back here real quick. It's that pushes. Hey, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I think a good indication of our confidence in that wastewater facility is that Robert and I both live like two blocks from it, so. That would not be the circumstance if I were a resident of El Centro.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
All right. We're going to adjourn the city council meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM. Good night, everyone.